Before we commence the meeting, I would like to draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me and the screen up there for the public gallery. Could you all please ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent and councillors, please make sure that your cards are pushed into the slot at the back of the unit and as ever, please ensure that you speak directly into the microphone. For the benefit of the public gallery, I'd like to introduce the officers in front of us this evening. Furthest away from me is Lewis Jones, planning lawyer, next to him is Steve Weaver, who is acting development manager, and here we have Catherine Pearson, the area team leader. So, moving on to the main items of business, to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 7th of March 2018, they've all been on the table for the last 30 minutes, have I your permission to sign them as a correct record? Thank you very much. Any apologies for absence, Amy?
Thank you, Chairman. All members of the committee are present, I believe.
Good. Any declarations of interest?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillors Stewart and Jeanette Stenner have declared a non-permeable interest in item A1 as they and family members have attended the club.
Thank you. Any questions from the public?
Thank you, Chairman. None received.
Sorry, I should have asked the committee whether there's any further declarations of interest, but, yes, councillor Townsend.
Can I just say, I'm a member of Cranley Parish Council Planning Committee.
Thank you. Right, question for Steve Weaver, any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since our last meeting?
Nothing to report of note at this time, Chairman. We are considering the MPPF consultation still, but that's a matter for another day.
Thank you very much. Would you like to also give us the performance against government targets figures, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, thank you, members. Firstly, an apology on my part, you were presented in your order papers with the end of calendar year figures rather than end of financial year figures in relation to performance on speed and quality, but on your tables you should see a revised suite of information that's been circulated for you this evening. If I just quickly draw your attention to the main headlines, it's the usual categorisation of performance in relation to both speed and quality. Firstly, on speed, major decision-making against a target of 60% or more set by the government, you'll see that for the year April 17 to March 18, we actually achieved just over 97%, which is excellent performance on these most complex of cases. And in respect to the non-major applications, against a target of 70% set by government, again, we're in excess of 98%. So, that's a lot of hard work by all factions of the development management process and reflects, as I say, really excellent results at end of year. Turning to the quality criteria, firstly in respect of the non-major decisions, and this is, as you recall, is the number of cases that are allowed on appeal as a percentage of the total number of cases in that category, there's a threshold of 10% and we're comfortably very much below that, at 1.58% for the year and 1.56% for the assessment period that the government set. In respect of major appeals, this is something which has been exercising, I think, everybody's minds over recent months, but, members, you will be aware that we've had a series of appeals that have recently been returned to us from central government that actually supports the council's position, and in particular following the adoption of the local plan that strengthened our case. So, what we actually now have is, compared to previous months, is an improving situation in terms of performance on those major appeals. So, for the ones that have remained outstanding, there's only two left to come in, we're currently running at 8.8%, so that's, again, comfortably below the 10% threshold, and for the year, 8.96%, again, below the 10% threshold. As I say, still two appeals left to come in, but I think we can be reassured that the decisions that are being taken now are having, you know, full cognisance of neighbourhood plans and the local plan situation as we now have it, so that's a good news story. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, that's good news indeed, yes. Just a note, in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the application this evening, this will be held on Monday, the 21st of May 2018, at a time to be agreed at the meeting. So, we move on to the main item of the meeting, which is item A1, application reference WA 2017 2301. The proposal is application under section 73A to vary condition 2 of WA 2015 2371. Condition requires complete removal of nets and structure to allow structure to remain at Cranley Cricket Club as amplified by information received on the 22nd of February 2018, and the site address is the Common at Cranley, GU68SN, and Catherine is going to present the application to us, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, you'll probably recall this item was deferred at an earlier meeting this year owing to a technicality with the ownership certificate completed in respect of the application. This matter has now been resolved, so I can just reassure members that any determination that you make this evening can be lawfully made now, there's no concern in that respect. The application relates to part of the Common in Cranley and is in connection with the cricket ground. The application seeks to retain the supports for the cricket nets all year round, the supports are located in this position here marked by the X, so you have the pavilion here, the cricket nets are in this position here. I'll just take you through some photographs, so these are the structures that are being sought to be retained all year round, the net coverings would still be removed, it is just the frame structure that is being sought to be retained. So, this is a view from the south, looking across the Common, the pavilion building is in this location behind this storage shed here, and this is a view in the opposite direction, looking towards that corner location, and the frames you can see here with the silver finish to them on the edge of the cricket ground. The matters for members to exercise their judgement in relation to this evening are the impact of this on residential amenity and the visual amenities of the proposal. The recommendation is that permission is granted and that condition is varied to allow the retention of these structures year round. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Catherine. This application, this consideration is open for public speaking, and I would like to invite Richard Everett, an objector, to speak. Good evening, Mr Everett, I understand the procedure has been explained to you and you have four minutes from the time when you start speaking?
When I push the button.
That's correct.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to the committee this evening. I want to emphasise that I am very supportive of cricket on the Common, and I think that's true of pretty well everybody who lives in the vicinity. However, the Common is a conservation area where you have, as a committee, a special responsibility under section 72 of the Listed Buildings and Conservation Areas Act of 1990, where it says that with respect to any building or land in a conservation area, your functions and while exercising your functions, special attention shall be paid to the desirability of preserving or enhancing the character or appearance of the area. And clearly, when this condition, the original condition was put in place, I think we saw that as a compromise between the needs of the cricket club and the preservation of the amenity of the conservation area, that would be compromised, I would suggest, if this application was allowed. Now, the application is intended to do two things, remove the requirement that the nets only and not the supports are removed, and to extend the period during which the nets and supports are erected from April to September. I would suggest in relation to the latter condition, that should be very specific, the last game, I think last year, on Cranley Cricket, for Cranley Cricket Club was on the 10th of September, and I would suggest that that condition specifies that the nets are down by the 15th of September at the latest. The reasons for the original conditions and for the net supports to be removed was in the interest of amenity of the area in accordance with your policies, and your officers' report at the time stated that the condition should be imposed in order to protect the visual amenity of the neighbouring dwellings. I think I would suggest that it's a much wider issue than just the neighbouring dwellings, and that would mean that they would be down for seven months of the year. The club was fully aware of this requirement to remove the supports when it developed the new nets, and it's now asking the council to compromise on what was a very clear requirement for the removal of the supports, to the detriment, I would argue, of the amenity of the conservation area as a whole. The reasons stated are difficulty and cost of removal, but I have not seen any evidence to support those contentions. Indeed, today, an indication has been sought from a nets company that it would probably cost about £2,000 to take those nets down and put them back up each year, now that is not an insignificant sum, one accepts that, but I think it is premature without proper evidence to grant this application as proposed. If you are minded to grant it, I would argue the following, that the structure is painted in a more suitable way, that it is specified that no cricket equipment paraphernalia is stored within a specified distance of the structure, it was cluttered for pretty well the whole of the winter until this application was due to come before the committee, with all sorts of site screen structures, wicket covering structures, temporary nets, et cetera, et cetera, and even your own officer, in his report, says that it concluded that the clutter of other cricket paraphernalia is harmful to the net supports in their own right, or you refuse the application. Sorry, my fault, time passes very quickly, so I think I would argue at this point that you should remove the, you should refuse the application.
Thank you, Mr Everett. Thank you. Now, I'd invite councillor Rosemary Burbridge of the Cranley Parish Council, thank you.
Thank you. I think it's already pushed, yes. Okay, thank you very much for having me. On warm sunny summer evenings, driving into Cranley and seeing cricket being played on Cranley Common is very special. The Common is important as a conservation area, and we also recognise that the game of cricket is important to very many of us in the village. When permission was given to change the position of the nets from the far side of the Common to an area beside the pavilion, the council, on the planning committee, recognised that the impact on the visual appearance would be greater. This is why we put condition 2 in place when we looked at the original plans, the visual effect of the net structure would to some extent be offset by tree cover in the summer months. Now, the view of the large metal structure as you drive into or out of Cranley, if you didn't know anything about cricket, you'd think somebody was going to build a house there and that was the scaffolding ready to build it, that's what it looks like, and it's very, very prominent, and it appears very much out of keeping with the surroundings, it in no way enhances this special area. And the interesting thing is that houses round the Common are in the conservation area, when those houses come up for anything done in the planning area, we have to be incredibly strict, they cannot alter the permission we give them because they are in the conservation area, and I feel this should also apply to the Common. Some of these homes have had their views spoilt by the scaffolding-like structure, and it's a pity that the cricket club have now built a structure which they say cannot be removed, moved in its present form, and did not wait to see if they could get permission to stick it there so it couldn't be removed. It's sort of saying, can we have the permission for something we weren't given permission for before, or at least that's how I see it. If this structure is only up for five or six months, it could be said to enhance the cricket players' and watchers' enjoyment. Rules regarding this planning application have been broken, if the applicants are seen to get away with it, a precedent could be set, the houses round the Common could say, when we've got our planning permission, we'll alter it just a little bit and then try and get permission to have done it. Nowadays, Cranley's conservation area, because of the amount of building we're having in our village, is so important, and I just feel, as a parish councillor, I want to fight to keep our conservation area special. I was on the team that looked at Cranley's conservation area originally, and it was amazing what we learnt about the Common and that area. Please, could you reject this because we don't want our Common spoilt? We'll cope with it if it's painted green and stays up for five to six months, but I would be very disappointed if it has to stay and you give it permission to stay, because try driving into Cranley and looking at it, it's horrible. It's lovely for cricket but horrible for residents, and I just want the protection that you alone can give it. Please, could you reject it? And you can have the 30 seconds, you had it, Richard. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Burbridge. Now, Dave Griffiths would like to speak in support of the application. Good evening, Mr Griffiths, same rules apply, as soon as you start speaking, the clock will start ticking, thank you.
Thank you for allowing Cranley Cricket Club the opportunity of speaking, I'm the secretary of Cranley Cricket Club. The cricket club has been a part of the history of the village and its community for the last 160-odd years. We have a thriving junior section of 200 boys and girls, and also provide coaching free of charge to three state primary schools in Cranley. The club also provided the new cricket pavilion within Gleeblen School. The senior first eleven play in the Premier Division of the Surrey Championship, the highest level in the county. The senior season finishes in early September, which is why we've applied to take the netting down in September rather than August. The old nets that were constructed on the Common were dangerous and beyond economical repair. The decision was taken in 2014 to apply for their replacement, and a planning application was subsequently granted for the construction of the new nets in their current location. The nets have to comply with English Cricket Board standards, and ours do, collapsible, easy-to-remove net structures do not comply. There is no other cricket club in the county or country, as far as the English Cricket Board are aware of, where the structure for the nets has to be removed annually. The old net structure was never removed during the closed season and has remained in position all year. The costs of taking the structure down and re-erecting it to ensure compliance with the required ECB standards have been quoted at £6,000 plus VAT per annum, £6,000 plus VAT per annum, by Slatters, the company who erected the nets. The club would struggle to find this amount of money, and the primary schools and junior coaching programmes would inevitably be adversely affected. The nets provide an important part of the coaching of junior members, the juniors are able to practise in the safety of the cricket nets, which also provide a safe environment to members of the public. Cranley Cricket Club had to apply to the planning inspectorate for common land consent to enable installation of the nets to take place on a permanent basis. In a decision to approve the application, the planning inspector made the following comment, "Overall, I conclude that proposals will have less of a visual impact than the existing nets, and so will benefit the public interests in the conservation of the landscape." Cranley Cricket Club has met with local residents and councillors to listen to the views of the residents, and has agreed that we would paint the structure green, a green colour of their choosing, to further reduce the visual impact once the netting is removed at the end of the season. The officers' report before you recommends approval of the nets and structure, subject to condition which the cricket club fully accept. The club asks for your support of the application.
Thank you very much. Members? Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a very difficult one. There have been 26 letters supporting the cricket club and 20 objecting, many of the ones objecting are from people who live around the Common. It is an application for a permanent structure, and the footprint of the structure is the size, basically, of a tennis court, and, however, the surrounding height is about three foot higher than a normal boundary fence of a tennis court, and I must admit that I do feel that it does have a visual impact on the Common. However, I am also weighing up then the benefit to the community and also the impact on the cricket club of having to take the structure down each year and the cost of that. So, at the moment, speaking to residents and members of the cricket club, they have mentioned about painting the structure green, and also about the date of when the cricket nets would be taken down, so whether or not that that can be made to be quite specific, say, the second week in September rather than just September, which could then, the nets could be then up till the end of September. So, what I would welcome tonight is to listen to my other fellow members and see what their thoughts are on the impact of, the visual impact of the structure, and also the comment about the condition as well, whether or not that can be tied up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Chairman. This is actually in my ward, and I support what my fellow ward member has also said. I would, I really must emphasise my support for the cricket club, I recognise the enthusiasm of all the young people playing, and as you come into Cranley, excuse me, to see them practising, playing is a lovely, lovely sight, but I also recognise that this area, as in the Cranley Conservation Area, it is the Common, the Cranley Common, and unfortunately, when the cricket club purchased these nets, I'm not sure that they gave any consideration to the impact, the visual impact on the properties there and on the general area. I think that's really rather sad. The frames themselves are not, to my mind, in any way attractive, I think they're oversized, visually intrusive, and actually I find them quite unsightly, and added to, what I must say, is the general clutter in the area of other pieces of equipment associated with the club, I think it's very unfortunate. I'm terribly torn over this one, I want to support the cricket club, I really admire what they do, I really admire the enthusiasm of all the young people, but as you come into Cranley, I think this is visually intrusive and unsightly. Obviously, they need to have cricket nets, and this is a new site, but I would welcome the views of my fellow councillors as well, but at the moment, I'm minded to think that it's not an appropriate application, although I do support a condition that suggests they should be removed by the second week in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else, councillor Voracewski?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the speakers, and Rosemary, you spoke beautifully and as passionately as always, so well done. I agree with what's been said, it's really, really difficult, but on balance, I do think there is a compromise to be reached here. There is, there is no two ways about it, this is in a conservation area, and it is a slight blight for the neighbours who have to look at this, but on a greater visual impact, and I think it was already touched upon earlier, driving through Cranley on a beautiful summer's evening, seeing all the spectators and all the players, it is really English, it is just beautiful to watch, and I wouldn't want to take that historical 160 years away from the cricket club by expecting them to absorb huge amounts of cost by removing the structure. It's bigger than what it should be, and it's more intrusive than what it should be, but I think on balance, a compromise has to be reached, and I think that compromise has already been suggested, that it's painted a colour suitable to blend in, it's difficult, it really is, but I think on balance, I would support the officers' recommendations, because I think there is massive benefits to seeing just as many people, players and spectators benefiting from it, and the Common getting real maximum usage of what is just a wonderful sport to watch, so whilst I have every sympathy and empathise what's been said, I think on balance, I'm in favour of the officers' recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Dinas.
Thank you, Chair, and this is a very difficult one to get our head around, it's a fairly brief report, but actually that hasn't made it any easier tonight to come to a conclusion, but the one thing which we haven't covered, which is on page 13 in the top paragraph, and it says, "Retained policy HE8 of the local plan 2002 is afforded substantial weight due to the level of consistency with the MPPF, and seeks to ensure that development preserves or enhances the character of conservation areas." And that's the one thing that does cause me some problem, that substantial structure doesn't preserve nor does it enhance the character, and it's clear in the report that we should be given that substantial weight, so that does cause me a problem, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I think everybody's, I'm not going to repeat what's been said already, but could we ask the officers' views as to the painting of these structure and putting a condition on, if that is possible, because it does seem to me to make this look something less like scaffolding poles would be an advantage, and also whether any conditions or informatives or something could be put on to ensure that the structure that's there isn't used as an informal collecting place for cricket paraphernalia, because seeing it as it is now in the photograph before us and painting it so that it blends in with the trees in the background by making it less obvious is fine, unless, of course, you then have site screens and net pitch covers and everything else stored in it as a convenient place to put things. So, on balance at the moment, I would be happy to go along with the officers' recommendations, but with a condition of painting and keeping it, you know, properly painted throughout, if that is possible, and no storage of other paraphernalia in the area.
Thank you. Catherine, would you like to comment on that, and also the suggestion that the date is brought forward from just generally September to midweek, second week of September?
Thank you, Chairman, yes. With regards to the painting of the structure, yes, it would be reasonable to require that to take place, would suggest a condition that perhaps we agree the colour with them first of all, and then that is subsequently painted within a timeframe, perhaps of three months from the date of the resolution. With regards to the timing, if members wish to tighten up that timing to the end of the second week of September... second week of September, it wouldn't be unreasonable for you to have such a tight condition. Maybe impractical for the cricket club slightly to finish a game and immediately remove the structures. We have to be reasonable and cognisant of the timeframes involved in doing that, but I think, you know, if that is the crux of the matter, then I think we could support you in sort of saying that's justifiable. With regards to the paraphernalia that has been sort of stored on the site, you could add an additional condition if you feel necessary to require that no additional storage takes place in the retained net structures once the nets have been removed. And that would be an enforceable condition. Obviously, if there is a breach of that condition, things are stored in that area, we would be able to go out and enforce against that. So I think those three conditions would just about meet the tests of being reasonable. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you Catherine. Councillor Band.
Thank you, chairman. Well, councillor Goodridge has said much of the things that I was going to say. It seems to me that Catherine has given us to some extent a green light to propose something conditions like that. It seems to me on the painting, they need to be painted before the winter season, so I think three months from the nets coming down would be too long. I think, you know, if the objective is really to reduce the impact of the structure during the winter season, then I think we would want to see those things painted fairly quickly before the onset of the first winter. So three months would take you, you know, into December and I think that's going too fast. So I think we would want to bring that forward a bit more. So that would be the first point, so I think we need to fix that. I can understand the difficulty in terms of the time when the nets are taken down. So one of the ways we're doing that, I would suggest, would be to be taken down within seven days of the last match or something, or something like that, with a backstop date, you know, whichever is the sooner or something like that would get over that. And then I agree completely with the issue of decluttering. I think we do need to make sure that they aren't used as a storage area, it's just too convenient. And again, obviously has an impact on the perspective, the aspect, if there's stuff cluttered there. So, you know, with the principle of those conditions, I think I'm minded on balance to agree with the officer's recommendation because I think, you know, the reality is, if you want cricket played to the standard it is played at Cranley, then you need structures of this sort of sort to support your netting. And it really becomes unrealistic to expect it to be taken down and put up every year. But having said that, I think there must be an effort made to maintain the aspect of this particular area. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you councillor Dinas, you wish to come back?
Yeah, thank you. Part of what I was going to say, my colleague has just said, but maybe one week from the last competitive game. Because I know lots of clubs will continue to play friendlies outside the season, so maybe one week after last competitive game. And totally agree with the comments about the painting, and I would just like something about the maintenance because it's very easy to paint it once and in two years' time it's going to look peeling and it's going to look really unattractive. So I'd like the condition to make sure that we keep it maintained. So that was just, really just to tighten that little bit more. Thank you, chair.
Thank you councillor Ellis.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you for allowing me to come back. I would like to just come back to the issue of the, what I think has been called cricket Things like sight screens and that were stored previously where the nets are now, but have subsequently been moved to the other side of the common. If you like, as you come into Cranley, you see the paraphernalia more than you did previously and quite frankly, it's unsightly. Now, clearly they've got to store this somewhere, but I would like to see some sort of condition, if that's possible, that the paraphernalia, these additional pieces of equipment like the sight screens, which quite large are stored in a thoughtful manner that does not intrusively invade the common, as it were. Thank you.
Thank you. I can see the planners having great fun coming up with the wording for that one. Before I come back to the plans, councillor Townsend, you wish to come back?
Thank you for allowing me to come back, Mr Chairman. I just wanted to say that the cricket club has been looking at ways to introduce or to restrict the paraphernalia around. And at the moment, we're working together to try and look at an alternative base for the sight screens and for the covers. But I do think that because people that are running the cricket club can come and go, if we can tie down the paraphernalia with some kind of condition, that that would be beneficial as well for the people living around the common because the sight screens and the actual covers are metal structures themselves and they are just, with this metal structure and those around the common as well, it has become very, very cluttered looking of late. So, thank you.
Thank you Catherine. Did you wish to comment on those various bits and pieces?
Thank you, chairman. I'll start with perhaps the easiest one, which is the painting. We can tighten up that condition. My original suggestion was that within three months of the resolution to grant permission, but obviously we're in April now and the nets will be in place, so we could limit that to a month, so it would be completed by the middle of October. With regards to the removal of the nets and tightening that up, it's been suggested within seven calendar days of the last competitive game?
In September.
In September. So within seven days after the last competitive game is played in September. So first of April until seven days after. The storage of the paraphernalia, it is a little more complex. Obviously, a lot of the paraphernalia referred to the screens etc. in and of themselves are not development. It is the use of that part of the site that we have the planning control of. Having said that, the site area for the application site is as shown edged in red, so we could perhaps propose a condition requiring details of the storage of equipment. I'm looking to Lewis for some guidance.
I think it's just really ensuring that we have a valid condition in the sense that it's, well, complies with the standard five tests, particularly that it's reasonable in all other respects and also certain. I think it might be useful if we could have an opportunity to think about the best way of achieving a way forward in terms of the storage. I wonder if it's something that we might be able to even delegate it for further consideration. I'll leave that there for now.
Thank you. Hands up all over the place, councillor Voracewski.
Yes, thank you, chairman, and thank you for allowing me to come back. My limited experience of the cricket club is that they are good neighbours, so I'm sure listening to what's been said here this evening is being taken on board. Forgive me for what might seem like something that's a bit obvious or not possible, but could we not have a condition in there that says that no paraphernalia to be stored in that structure at any time and for them to make alternative arrangements somewhere else? So that structure is to remain free in the form of a condition of any paraphernalia?
Okay, again, I can see that the problems that the officers have because with a condition like that, they could stick it in the middle of the cricket pitch, couldn't they? And it could be there all winter. I can't see how we can tie this down without stipulating where they should store stuff. Councillor Goodridge.
I would have thought most cricket clubs would put the sight screens, for example, adjacent to the pavilion. In other words, there's a structure there and you stick it at the back of or, because it's got to be stored upright, I suppose. Joking, we could have painted it green during the winter and then painted it white again in the summer. But I don't think that would be a very good idea. But, you know, the sight screens are the things that stick up and you either put them down on the ground, which I suspect may be difficult for their maintenance, but if they have to be upright, to say, adjacent to the pavilion or something like that, so you've got the massing of them in one place. So far as the metal pitch covers are concerned, they're not going to be quite so noticeable because they're presumably, I don't know the particular sort, but they must be low on the ground, I would assume, so less visible across the common.
Okay, I can see councillor Stuart Stenner is anxious to give us the benefit of his cricketing knowledge.
Yeah, very limited. I was just thinking, quite a good point actually. Mike was saying about they could be sandpapered down, that would be quite nice before what's gone on, they'd have another use of their sandpaper, all the Australians have used. Anyway, we won't go there. To force, as we call the clutter, you would be impossible because they're all on wheels. So you could put an enforcement notice on it and they could move it two metres and so it's movable, it's terrible, you can't enforce anything on that. Those sight screens and stuff have been on the grounds for some 150 years, they've always been there, played a good standard of cricket. The previous nets that were across the other side of the ground, the posts, were, I think, if my memory serves me right, although I'm quite old, six by six and painted green and were never a problem. I think the solution that's on the table is fine. I think put the condition on, as my fellow councillor says, don't store anything in the nets. And I'm sure Cranley Cricket Club will be good neighbours and keep it tidy. And I have already spoken to the residents and if there was anything else needed doing, they have my full support as a company to do whatever they want to do. But we would need certain permission for planting of trees and so forth. So I really like to go home and have my tea, to be honest.
Before you do, councillor Townsend would like to come back.
Sorry, thank you for allowing me to come back. When the officers are mentioning about the posts, we didn't mention about the maintenance of the, if they are going to be painted green, about the maintenance programme on it. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure that that can be tidied up in the wording, can't it? As a committee, are we happy to go forward with a recommendation that includes these extra three conditions, i.e. the painting, the timing and the paraphernalia? Yes? So can I put then a revised recommendation that's subject to conditions one to two and additional conditions three, four and five? And informative one on page 18 of the report, permission be granted. All those in favour, please? Abstentions? Do. Thank you very much. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you.